Yeah, alright, so let's get started. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Howesman.
Here.
Jones, Parsons, Wakefield.
Here.
And Mayor Beasley.
Are we expecting anybody else, or is this a...
I haven't heard from anybody.
Okay, um, can we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Clark, second by Wakefield, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on, we're gonna talk about water projects.
Visitors and timed items.
Oh, visitors and timed items, okay. Visitors and timed items, please.
Can I ask somebody?
Anybody here would like to address the council? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on.
And we should introduce...
Yes, I was going to do that, yep. And we want...
Jan's not in our city.
Okay, we wanna welcome Tammy, so, welcome. Alright, now, can we move on? Okay. I've been running meetings, it's been a while since I've been in meeting. Okay, we're gonna talk about prioritizing water projects.
Hi, guys. Thank you. We, uh, thank you for having these meetings, these will be nice. I think they're, it'll be good to work through some of these things. I think we've hashed out a lot of water stuff in the last eight or 10 months, and I think it's been good dialogue. Um, I think we need to, um, you know, move past some of this stuff and, and hopefully we can get to, to making some improvements. Uh, the Water Committee did recommend some things, and so, uh, what we've done, uh, since then is, uh, we've taken the Water Committee information and, um, uh, let me back up. We've taken the report, the more recent water report that Stockwell had put together that we had went through about a meeting, I think one meeting ago, and, or two meetings ago, and then, uh, we have the summary up in front of you, uh, of the different improvements that are needed. And I don't, would you guys like me to run through all of those again, briefly, the short-term and long-term things? Uh, but what we were originally, what we wanted to do tonight was really pull up our map, show you what is existing infrastructure, and then talk a little bit about what was recommended by the Water Committee, so that we can kinda go down that road, and then there's some things that are future projects that the Water Committee, uh, has not, uh, recommended yet, but I think they're gonna be on our radar that, uh, that we're gonna be, uh, thinking, need to be thinking about. And so the question is whether or not we want placeholders, uh, for when we set our rates. So, when I say placeholders, I mean, uh, some dollars set aside for additional wells or connection to MCWC or a new treatment plant and all that stuff. So, uh, we've kinda went through that with our report, and then, uh, so now, I, what we'd like to do is just kinda talk through the different, um, existing infrastructure that you have, so that you're all aware of where we're at with our existing infrastructure. So Ryan, if I could have you pull up our, that map that you have, your second sheet there is kind of our, uh, existing infrastructure map, and, and we'll zoom in on that so you guys can see that a little closer and I'll point to some different things. You all know where our existing elevated water storage tank is, that's a 250,000 gallon tank, so relatively small tank that's above ground. Right over here, back by the existing, where the, uh, school district's administration building is, just on the backside is where our well number three. That well number three is in the deep aquifer, so that's in the Split Rock Creek aquifer, so that's a deep aquifer well. Well number seven, uh, you're all aware where that's at on the south side, south of McCarty Park, south and east of the railroad tracks. Uh, that was the well that was purchased by the, we purchased it from the city of Sioux Falls and developed it last year. Well number six is the well that we depend heavily on, that's also in the Split Rock Creek aquifer, so there, all three of the wells that we've talked about so far are all in the deep aquifer. Well six is the one that we, like I said, we depend heavily upon, and that's the one that, uh, we, we really need some redundancy on, and that's what we've talked about with the Water Committee. And then you all are aware where our water treatment plant is. Just adjacent to the water treatment plant, in the little shop building there, there's a corner of that building that, uh, was built over the top of well number one. And that well number one is in the shallow aquifer, and only produces about 120 to 150 gallons a minute. So it's a shallow aquifer well, that's the only one that we're using right now in the shallow aquifer. And then, uh, we had, what you see in red on the map, on the, on the way left over there by Six Mile Road and Rice Street, is where our proposed west-side water tower is going, and that's under design, as you know. We're gonna be, we're wrapping up those plans here in the next couple of weeks, uh, that we'll be able to start reviewing those with you folks, uh, and the city engineer, Brian, uh, real soon, so that we can, um, modify those plans as we need to, and then make the decision, uh, to go out for bids soon on those. And that west side is well number, the west side well, or, I'm sorry, the west side water tower, which is 1.25 million gallons. The east side tower is the same size, and that's located on, uh, suit, or on Redwood and Chestnut, and just a little north of there. So, as you know, we, we bought land from Larry, or Randy and Bonnie Nelson, and so that's located up here on the hill just north of that intersection. So that's kind of our existing infrastructure for water. Um, and so now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the next page and we'll talk a little bit about, uh, what was proposed or recommended, um, by the Water Committee to move forward with. And I'll first talk about what we're calling well number eight. Well number eight, as you recall, we had put together bid package for well number eight, and it was intended to, uh, not necessarily take the place of well six, but take the place of well six. So, uh, well number eight would simply be, uh, a deep aquifer well, new well. We were gonna maintain well number six, so in the event that we still needed a lot of water supply from that location, we could still utilize well number six, but the intent, the intent was to build well number eight so that that is a, a new well, including casing, riser pipe, stainless steel, uh, equipment, uh, things like that, with a, a more, uh, uh, secure building for the flow meter controls of the pump and things like that. Very similar to what we had done with well number seven. Uh, the current well number six has a wooden, uh, shed that holds the equipment, so if we have a big, high wind, we, we risk even losing controls and things like that. So that's why we really need to improve that well number six, and that was why well number eight was meant to take the place of six. And that's located, uh, just north of well number six, as you can see on the map right there. And part of that well number six was also to include a transmission line to the plant as well, from that new well. So that was one of the items that was proposed, that cost was right at 1.3 million dollars, so that was one item.
So that was to cover the redundancy issue, right?
Yeah, exactly, it was part of the redundancy, yep, yep. And then the other item that was discussed was, uh, I'll talk about the water treatment plant right now, and one of those things were, was to replace the filter media, that estimated cost was about 135,000, to replace the filter media to the IMR media, and what that would do is help us with the radium removal. Um, when we did our pilot cut, study, that different filter media had a better, uh, removal of the radium when we, when we did our pilot. And so it would be, it was our recommendation at that point to replace that media with, uh, with the IMR. And so that, to do that, though, there's a little bit of a challenge with that from a constructability. We have to, we can take a, a single, there's, there's four different cells in our water treatment plant that, uh, that have the, uh, filter media in, that we'd have to replace, uh, one at a time or two at a time, and ideally, we would do that in the wintertime when we don't have a lot of, uh, demand for water, and so...
John, if we would eventually hook up to MCWC, does, is that compatible with this IMR system? Or we would have to change that out?
No, I mean, no...
That's all gonna have to be changed out, no matter what?
It, it would be, okay, it would need to be, we would recommend changing it out no matter what. Um, if we connect to MCWC, that's already treated water, so we'd bring in MCWC on the backside of our plant, so we wouldn't necessarily run it through our filters. We would just treat our raw water and run MCWC right into our, our plant and mix it on the backside of our plant.
So, I guess my, my point is, if we make this change, are we just spend wasting money in case we go to MCWC?
I feel this is a maintenance item.
Okay.
I, I don't feel this is a waste of money at all. Uh, it's a maintenance item, it's something you're not, I, I, I don't believe you would necessarily, um, abandon your current water treatment plant. It's more or less a maintenance item on your existing water treatment plant.
And, one of the things, you know, when we start looking at redundancy and really starting to drive home that focus, if we do a connection to MCWC, um, and something were to ever happen to that connection, we would still wanna use our treatment plant, and that's where the IMR filter media would make sense.
Yep.
Uh, it's definitely a good spend, and our sand is probably past its prime, so, uh, as I get Raleigh's head shakes, so...
Yeah, are you in concurrence with that, Raleigh?
Yeah, the, it's probably only about 40 to 60% effective rate now.
Okay.
It's supposed to last eight to 10 years, we've made it last 20.
We're at 20 years, so we needed to replace it for some time.
And that IMR...
And you could, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna, that, so, if this green sand were up to capacity and doing what it was supposed to be doing at 100%, the IMR is still 10, like 10% better?
Better, yes.
So if we're clear down here, I mean, that's significant.
Yes, and it, and it makes a big difference when we're talking about radium removal, that's where the big difference comes in. Um, you know, that, you wouldn't think that 10% is that much, but it, it really is significant when you're looking at the amount of radium that we need to remove, so it really helps considerably. So that was, uh, one of the items that, that was recommended. Um, they also had recommended, uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about well number nine. Uh, there was a, uh, LBG, which is now a new name, and I can't remember the name of them, uh, Brian, you might remember. Uh, WSG or some, WSG or something, okay, they're currently working, okay, the geologist, uh, that did the report that identified well number six, location, uh, was working for Stockwell back in 2014 and prepared this report. And that's the same company, same geologist working for, um, working for AE2S right now, doing your other study. And so really what, uh, what they had recommended in that report was to investigate, uh, well, what we're calling well number nine, uh, in more detail. And I think we've got those, that well, uh, information over here. Uh, based on their report, they had estimated about 300 to 500 gallons a minute is what they felt they could get out of that, uh, well. Now that would be a shallow aquifer well, similar to well number one. But there could be some issues with that, and so what the Water Committee recommended is we simply move forward with the pump test. So, uh, what we, what we've done so far is a, um, a two-inch pump test, if you will, a two-inch, uh, uh, line pump test, and just really to estimate the depth of the sand, the, the amount of, uh, material that we have, uh, to, to draw water from, from a screen standpoint. And so what we need to do next is actually drill a, a larger well and actually do a, a hard pump test on that. So, before we spend the $900,000 that you see there, uh, we're proposing that, or the Water Committee recommended that we move forward just with the pump test, which is, should be around $100,000 or less. And that was what, uh, the, they had recommended, that we simply do the test pump at that location, and then if that proves to be, uh, acceptable, uh, then we would, uh, recommend moving forward with the full development of that well and transmission line over to the treatment plant.
So, let's say that, um, we like that well, and let's say we also have eight, so we would use it to, um, cover additional needs that eight can't, can't cover?
Yeah, let me just talk about this. Um, part of the, part of what came out of our Water Committee, as well as, uh, what we've talked about in the past, is, is we kinda need a mixed bag of the water supply, and we need our deep aquifer wells, and we need our shallow aquifer wells. This just gives us a little more supply in our shallow aquifer wells, and it wouldn't be, um, 'cause right now we're dependent, from a shallow aquifer well standpoint, we only have well number one, and that produces that 120 to 150 gallons a minute, so not very much. Uh, so we wanna get a little more capacity out of the shallow aquifer for a couple of reasons. One, for redundancy, so we have more water supply, and we feel that that's relatively low-cost water. If it were to develop the 300 to 500 gallons a minute, it's relatively low-cost water that we could blend with the deep water, the deep aquifer water, to help reduce the radium levels going into the raw, from the raw water standpoint, going into our treatment plant, so we can simply even reduce the radium levels lower. And so it's, uh, it was important when we were moving forward with seven, that we were moving, we needed to be moving forward at, at the same time, if we could have, with, well, the shallow aquifer to help blend that water. And that's really what we are continuing to do now, is to move forward with that shallow aquifer. And so if we were to develop that well completely, we've estimated that at about $920,000.
Okay, so, um, so everything kinda costs so far, can we also talk timelines? So, when we talk about the research on well nine, are we talking, we can pop a hole in the ground in the next 30 days? I mean, obviously getting and that kinda stuff.
Yeah, 60, I would say 60 days, 90 days, we'd, we'd be, uh, we'd be able to get a contractor on board to do that pump test. Uh, we, we're putting a proposal together, uh, we've talked to Brian about this, putting a proposal together to do that test pump. Um, we will simply do a, an informal bid pack, or not an informal, it'll be a bid package, uh, and then we'll solicit well drillers to come and do that pump test for us, and do, and we'll do sampling at that same time, so...
And then, um, once we do that, uh, how much time will, uh, the engineer take to kinda wrap that up?
Yeah, it'll take a couple of months after that, uh, to kinda wrap it up. So realistically, we're looking at January or February for, you know, to really know the water quality. We're, we're cer, we're, we're quite confident of the water quality if we don't have any impacts of, uh, surface water on that. If for some reason we find that we start, uh, drawing too much water from the lake, so to speak, right there, um, we may have an impact, uh, and may have to worry about nutrient or nit, nitrates in the water, for example. That's something that you worry about when you start pulling water from a surface water situation, and we don't wanna get into that. So, that's why we wanna test pump that well, uh, in several different capacities, so that we can really see what kind of an impact we have and test that water after we pumped it for a long duration of time. And so, we'll, you know, a couple of months after that, we'll have results, and we'll be able to come back with you to make that recommendation, whether to move forward or not with that well.
So if we have, um, well nine, which is the shallow...
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do we, do we think that there's a possibility that at some point we can use seven?
Oh, yes, yes.
To, and blend them?
Yes.
'Cause we've got the well, well sitting there.
Yep, and that's, that was, that, that's really why you wanna do that, is you wanna take well nine and well one, shallow aquifers, and blend those with well seven. And so as soon as we have well nine, uh, seven is the new well out to the east. So what we would do is we would blend as much shallow water as we could with the deep well, and as you know, we put on variable frequency drives on our pumps, so that we can, we can throttle well seven. All of our new wells, we're able to throttle them, so we can, we can, rather than pumping them at full capacity all the time, we can reduce them down to 50 or 60% of their capacity, so we can pump them at, instead of 1,200 gallons a minute, we can pump it at 500 gallons a minute, for example, or 400 gallons a minute, and just throttle it way down, so that we can then, what we wanna do with well seven and, and the shallow aquifers, so the deep aquifer, shallow aquifer, we wanna blend those and do a live pilot. And when I say a live pilot, we wanna blend well seven with wells, then what we would is, if, if well nine is acceptable, with well nine and well one, and blend them, so that we make sure that we have good water quality going to the customer at all time. And so we would simply, i- if, if the committee and the council are, approve us to, to do a live pilot with seven, that's what we'd recommend doing. Even if you don't do a live pilot with seven and decide not to, not to use it, it's still nice to have that redundancy with shallow aquifer water. Shallow aquifer water is better water, it's, it's, uh, uh, it's nice to blend that water with our, uh, well eight. Even if we don't have an issue, even if we don't use well seven, we can still blend it with wells, well six and eight, and still help our water quality.
So if we decide to do that with well seven, are we gonna have like some kind of public meeting?
Yes.
Because of all the big outcry about well seven?
Yes, we would, before we do it, okay, okay, first of all, Joe...
We wanna address that right away.
First of all...
You know where I've gone with that?
Yes, and that's good, that's really good. Joe, the, well, council, uh, as a whole, we wouldn't do that without, you know, first of all, the Water Committee's authorization, your authorization, public outreach, let them know what we're gonna do. Um, that was our intent, uh, all the time, it's just, I'm just trying to lay out the next steps for you, and I don't disagree, uh, a public outreach is important. Yep?
Well, if, I mean, if, if all the cards fell right, and we had eight, and we had nine, and seven, if all of those are producing, then I guess my question is, I'm not sure where that takes us quantity-wise, if that would cover us.
At that point, we'd max out our treatment plant at 2,000 gallons a minute.
Then we at least have some redundancy in our wells. Um, we don't have, we still won't have the redundancy in the treatment yet, but that's something that's, that's a bigger ticket item. Uh, but, uh, so, we need the redundancy in our wells, period. Um, that needs to happen. Uh, the other thing that, uh, that we haven't shown on here is, is well number three. We talked about that as an existing water supply. That well number three, we, we simply chlorinate that and then send it into our system, so when we need, have a higher demand, we've got well seven also, or I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, well three, to still utilize well three, that we can just send that right into our system, and, uh, it meets all EPA standards.
So that would never have radium in it?
It does, it's just not very high levels. It meets all the level, EPA levels, without doing a treatment for the radium. And we would, long-term, well three has been a, a great well over the years. Uh, it, it's not a bad idea to bring well three even to our treatment plant. Once we build, if you decide to move forward with another treatment plant, it would be important to bring well three to the plant as well, so that you always have consistent water supply going through to your system. And that would, that would en, ensure that you would have that, 'cause then well three could also be treated just like wells, um, well seven or well eight, for example. We did estimate that, but we didn't include it in here at this time, because right now, um, these are, I'll call them our short-term improvements. Uh, to get well three, um, do you remember what that number was? We do, how much? That, I don't think, I think it'd be more than that, but, but, uh, we'll, we have that number and we'll, we'll certainly bring it, I'm surprised... Yes, that's something we don't need right now, but we do need it by the time you build your new plant. So that would be something you'd wanna do, uh, well, you don't need it, but it would be ideal to have it coming to your plant at that time, because, uh, once you build your new plant, you're all of a sudden gonna have a lot more treatment capacity, and you won't have enough water supply again, so it's kinda one of those things, you need to go out and look for more water supply. And so that's something that you can, uh, we can look at when AE2S finishes their report, uh, they, they will help identify that as well. Okay, so these items, we've identified some dates on here of when you wanted to do them, you may wanna do those. For example, we have the existing water treatment plant, we've got a rehab of that in 2025, and the reason we show that in 2025 is because we feel that that could be done after your new treatment plant is built, if you choose to build a plant. And then you would do a, a bunch of upgrades to that existing plant, if you, at that point, you would do, um, the piping needs to be, you know, it, it just needs to be, some piping valves need to be replaced, a fair amount of work needs to be done, but that's something that can, can be done later. If for some reason you choose to bring, uh, MCWC on sooner than that, then you would have to spend this money sooner, because we would need, um, uh, we feel we need the, a chlorine room to be added to the plant, and some electrical upgrades in order even do additional chlorine feeds. So that's why we've shown that number on there. Um, if, uh, if we decide to take on MCWC and change our water, um, disinfectant to a chloramine instead of chlorines, then you would, um, you would need to do something different with that. Uh, and we would have to spend that $4 million sooner than the 2025. So, with those items that we've identified, we've also put together the spreadsheet for your rates, okay? Oh, wait a minute, Brian, did you wanna talk about, um, did you wanna talk about any of the longer-term items at this point?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that come into play with setting rates. You know, what type of insurance do you want, what term? Uh, do you wanna go on the private market, do you wanna go with the state revolving fund? And there's, there's pros, certainly pros and cons to each of those. You know, you always wanna try to match your debt service to the life of the asset. You know, I think with, with the state revolving loan fund, you've got a choice of either 20-year or 30-year term. Interest rates are fairly low, 2% to 2.5% currently. You know, if, if you stretch out that, that term, it'll certainly lower the, the annual cost. But for instance, you know, this is, this is something the council's gonna have to decide, you know, if we go with a 30-year term on the water treatment plant, our current one is 22 years old, 23 years old?
The plan?
Yeah.
20.
No, yeah, it's 20.
20, barely.
And we're, and we have to start replacing some equipment. So if you go on a 30-year term, we're gonna start replacing equipment before we've got it paid off. I mean, there's a balancing act there that, that we need to take a look at.
And, that's a good point, and the other thing to think about is, we've got some upgrades to that existing plant at $4 million. Now that's, we're adding a larger chlorine room, so that it's not apples to apples, but we spent, I think, I think we spent about 2.2 million on that plant when we built it 20 years ago. So, the upgrades, just to get it back refurbished, are more than what we paid for it new. So, it's, it's, so that, so when you go out 20 years from now and you're making improvements, like what Brian's saying, after 20 years, chances are you'll spend a fair amount of money on the rehab, that, you know, I don't know that it'll be, you know, like what we're looking at right now, but...
And for example, you know that, that proposed waste, or water treatment plant was now softening at 12.6 million? That's basically doubling the, doubling our current plan.
Yeah, yep.
So it costs 2 million when we built it, 3 million.
Yeah.
What we're gonna do today is 12.
Yeah, it probably was more than two, I'm sorry.
So those are some things that we need to take a look at, we wanna stretch those terms out. The private market, a little more flexibility than the state revolving loan fund, you're gonna pay a little bit more interest rates, uh, typically 4% to 5% instead of 2% to 2.5%. In terms, you can, you can set those terms from 10, 10 years to 30 years, whatever you want. The, the requirements, for instance, um, you know, if you're, if you're using the state revolving loan fund, you're gonna have some federal requirements you need to, that you need to meet.
By American.
By American Steel.
American Steel, for example, which we're gonna have to anyway.
You're gonna have to anyway.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have, uh, those issues anyway, so...
So there's, there, and there's David State and wage rates.
Yeah.
Which you've gotta, which isn't a big deal, 'cause I think that the vast majority of contractors in the area pay at or above market wage. pay at or above market wages, so that isn't an issue. You know, the other side with private, you can finance, or you can pay that debt off however you choose, if it goes against your debt limit. Currently, we've got about, looking at about thirty-five to thirty-six million in debt capacity. So we've got plenty of debt capacity to issue debt. Of course, we build a twenty-five million dollar treatment plant, that eats up a lot of that in one chunk. With the state revolving loan fund, you've basically got two options for debt payment. One, you put it on a volume charge, which then gets, let's say it's a dollar per thousand gallons. So the more you use, the more you pay. That goes against your debt limit, that debt. If you put a surcharge on it, so a monthly fee that goes to everybody equally, that does not go on your debt limit. So there's, I mean, there's some things to look at.
That's currently what we have with the sewer right now.
Yeah.
Five dollars or?
Yeah.
Sewer transfer station.
Yeah.
So that's a decision the council needs to take a look at, do you want to charge the low-end user that uses a thousand gallons per month, the same amount that you're charging fifty thousand gallon a month user?
But there's ways that we could manipulate, maybe, not the right word, but adjust our current rate structure, so that we, by ordinance, reduce our fixed rate down, put this five-dollar surcharge on, so we're keeping it very close, and then increase our, so there's some things we could do that way, correct?
We could certainly take a look at some of that.
That's what we did with the sewers, our base rate went down, and the surcharge went up.
So we could take a look at that, you know, the other thing that you should seriously consider with these new facilities anyway, the big stuff, the treatment plant, how much of that is extra capacity for new residents?
Yeah.
And you, as a current resident, are gonna pay for your share in your current utility bill. Should the new residents pay for their capacity when they build a house?
Yeah.
And add to the system? And that, those are typically connection fees.
Yeah, so I guess there's a couple of things with that. On the water towers, as an example, I think we already have, we have to reapply or something, I think you said, or?
Well, the states have told us, or asked us, if we would relinquish our current allocation for the water towers, they would consider us again at the next funding cycle, I think, which is in October, and there's a lower interest rate.
Darn, yes, okay, so, with the water towers, you know, I don't know exactly what the usable life is, but water towers last a long darn time. You might have to put some paint on them, you might have to do some pump work, valve work, but the majority of the cost is the structure itself, so the risk of that not living past a thirty-year note, I think is pretty low. So, with those specifically, now when you start talking the treatment plant, yeah, holy smokes, we're putting a lot of money in the twenty-year-old piece of equipment, we're not gonna want to push that out to thirty years. But as we look at those water towers, you know, that can definitely impact the rate payers by quite a bit, and like you said, Brian, it's, that's an asset that residents that haven't even, potentially been born yet, might get to use when they move to Brandon, when they get out of college. So, you know, it's one of those where it's really not fair to the current residents to foot the ten million dollars for two water towers that residents in the future will use. But yet, hopefully in twenty, thirty years, we're building a third or fourth water tower, because Brandon's awesome, and there's more people moving to town. So, we have to take that carefully, but, you know, the rate impacts, when you're talking that low of an interest rate, and what it does for the residents, I think it's definitely a valid point to look at extending that out. The more risky pieces of equipment, like the treatment plant, or the wells, it just doesn't make sense to push that on a long-term note, because you're not gonna ever get to that point, you're gonna be paying on something, and it's sitting in a junkyard, I mean, just like cars today, or campers, or whatever it is, push the loans out until they're rusty. So, we don't want to do that, I don't think, but, so I guess I've got a couple of things I wanted to kind of talk through on the wells and the order, but maybe we can, I don't know where you guys are at, if you've got some stuff to wrap up?
I'm, I've kind of wrapped up the recommendations, you know, we've got to go through, you know, in my opinion, kind of a public discussion about whether or not you want to soften or not, but that's something that needs to happen in the next few years, because if we're gonna soften our water, I mean, that adds a fair amount of costs, as you can see, to the two options right there, so that would be something we'd have to evaluate, as far as, you know, what does that impact of the customer as well? But what we would like to do, and we can show you that by just plugging in the number today, but, I think that's, what we wanted to do tonight, is we've got the, your, I guess your book, so to speak, on a spreadsheet, so that we could plug in the different rates, or not the different rates, but the different projects that are proposed in the different years, and we can, we can see how that impacts your water rates for right now. And so if we're in agreement with the proposed projects, with what the water committee had proposed, we can pull up our spreadsheet, and we can start looking at what impact are those if we spend that money in 2019, for example? And then we can, then you can decide if you want to add some more placeholders for other things, such as additional wells, or connection to the MCWC, or the new treatment plant, we can still look at those at the same time, so you can just get a glimpse of what that could look like, would look like, if you did it within the next ten years. So with that, if you're ready, Brian, we'll pull up the rate, and then you can just, we can just take a look at what we had showed you the other night, with those projects happening in 2019. And then, we've got the spreadsheet set up, if you want us to change from a, you know, a shorter-term loan, but higher interest rate, we can do that, or we can go to thirty-year notes with, you know, the two-and-a-half percent interest, or a twenty-year note with a two-and-a-quarter percent interest, and so on and so forth. So, I think what we started out with was a twenty-year note on all these items, and I guess I'd let, Brian, it looks like you want to kind of weigh in on that, so if you wanted to start with comments, we certainly could do that, too.
I think it's more of a policy decision with terms, I mean, we can sit and play with these and kind of mix and match, but I think we should really think heavily about, okay, for water towers, the useful life of water towers, forty-plus years, it makes sense to go to a thirty on something with a useful life of that long. You know, we should really agree, instead of sitting here and playing with, well, if we do this well at fifteen years, it'll make sense, well, maybe we want to do wells at ten.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna start replacing.
Well, should be.
So I think we should really have a policy discussion about, okay, wells with, I don't want to say expendable equipment, but the shorter life, we'll be going to pumps and check valves, and.
Yeah.
Every, you know, maybe wells are at ten, and I'm just throwing some ideas out, wells at ten, treatment plant's gonna be twenty, tower's forty, thirty, you know, street projects, you want to kind of keep those to ten if you can.
Right, so, kind of the numbers just kind of start going through my head, and when I think of, you know, I want to make sure that we get it paid off, and then we have, I don't know if it's a certain percentage of life left, but something along those lines. So in the case of the water towers, if we take a thirty-year note, the expected life is a forty-year life, basically, we're gonna have a thirty percent life expectancy-ish left, I think that's how the math works.
Yes.
But if we did something along those lines, where we know we're gonna have a little bit of time to get ready, in the case of the water treatment plant, when you're talking fifteen million dollars, and this one got us twenty years, you're talking a million a year now, because of fifteen-year note. That changes the picture very drastically.
Yep.
On the rates, so, just making sure that we have some free usable life, I think is the best way to explain it.
Yeah, you know, cities are all over the board, some of them subscribe to that, okay, we want to pay this off five to ten years ahead of time, so that, and then others' communities go, you know what, we're just gonna roll into the next, this note's done, we're gonna roll into the next project, and use that debt service capacity that we just paid off to fund the new stuff. So they're all over the board, it's just an individual community decision, how do you want to do that? You know, for instance, towers, we pay them off in thirty, they're good for forty years, we can't necessarily bankroll that extra ten years. The state doesn't give us any attaboys for saving money for these projects, it's an odd, they don't give you any points for saving money. That doesn't come into their criteria, that's one of the things that we've talked about on a regional basis, is, can we talk to DNR and at least give communities that are saving some extra points, but they don't, they don't recognize it.
Yep.
We really need to take a look at matching those, and, you know, when we're talking about our debt limit, we've got, like I said, plenty of debt capacity, but if you're talking, even if we just do the treatment plant upgrade, twelve million, well, that takes a third of what we got available, and then if we're going to start doing, you know, a million and a half to two million a year in street improvements, we're gonna quickly eat up our debt capacity.
We already put out that one, paid one.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, and that, and there's, you know, three million, I think, in debt, but like I said, if we start doing those street projects on ten-year notes, ten million dollars in debt before one falls off, you know, actually, fifteen to twenty million in debt.
Yeah.
Before one falls off.
So a lot, a lot of communities will go, and they'll do these projects, the project that actually improves or helps the entire community, that's the projects you can put on the surcharge, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian? So those projects, when you have an opportunity, you may want to do that. So, a water treatment plant helps the whole community, a pool helps and provides for the whole commu, but it's for the whole community, it's a community pool.
Water towers.
Water towers, it's a community thing, okay? So those things, you may want to do a surcharge for, so that, because when you go to doing street projects, they don't qualify for that.
I'm really interested in us doing, this may be off-topic, but doing the tiered rates, because of what we've found with the water usage, people just still aren't getting it, and so maybe if it hits their pocketbook a bit, that might help.
And that's another factor to take a look at when we look at rates, if we would go to a tiered system, how much additional revenue would we generate, which could conceivably lower the overall increase of rates?
And you got me the, all the data in those CSVs, so what I'll do is, I'll build a system up where we can see how a tiered rate would impact it, so I've got some homework to do, and it's gonna take some time, there's a ton of data, but when we look at what that impact would be to the revenue, the other piece of this that we need to look at, and it's not necessarily for this meeting, but cost recoveries is a big thing, because we continue to see developers come in, a prime example is right by Aspen Park, we're doing a big development there, and we kind of have a handshake agreement, if you will, on the fixing that lift station, well, realistically, we should do a cost recovery on that, we should say, this is what it's gonna cost to do that lift station, it's this much per acre in cost recoveries. The big thing is, right now, we're looking at a lot of development on the east side of town over by my house, and TB&amp;J wants to break eighty acres, the school, we need to spend a bunch of money on the sewer to get over there to them, and water and all of that, well, we should be looking at a cost recovery for them. So to put that in perspective, you know, Sioux Falls, some of their cost recoveries end up being about five thousand an acre. On an eighty-acre chunk, that's four hundred thousand dollars that we can put towards improving our infrastructure, and that's something that we direly need today. So, I think at some point, we need to have a meeting just dedicated to that.
Rates.
And go through what those cost recoveries look like, and as a community, it's our way to say, look, we're trying to be fair to everyone, the new residents that are coming in, yes, they're helping pay for what they're adding to burden, to the community, and we want to welcome them, so, and if we can get ahead of it soon enough, that the developers build it into their budget, five thousand dollars on an acre, when they're selling quarter-acre lots, it doesn't take much to get that five thousand bucks, so.
It's about three lots per acre, kind of.
Yeah, so, you know, you figure three acres, well, you know, it's, you take five thousand, divided by three, they don't even, you know, they just put it on the bill.
They'll let you know.
They'll put it on the bill, it's not gonna be great, but.
But they, but you're right, it's, that's the way to, that's the way to recover the cost of that trunk sewer, and it's equal, it's fair, it's benefiting all the people out there.
And we do currently have some cost recoveries.
Yeah.
The hard part is the money trickles in slowly.
Right, so, you know, those are things that we can look at, you know, as well, to try and to offset some of these costs, but for now, what do we have for numbers, I guess?
Okay, let me, let me just have you run to this page on the handout, and this really just identified those capital projects we talked about. It's the capital improvement program, this is our spreadsheet that we've been working on to update costs, and we can put it out at different years, those improvements. So if you, what you see in the water improvements, which is the blue there on the bottom, you see in 2019, we have nine-point-seven million for the water towers and distribution lines to those towers, well number eight, we have the one-point-three million, well number nine, if you develop, fully develop well number nine, that'd be about nine-hundred thousand. The study, we show eight, one-hundred-and-eighty thousand, that, obviously, that was less than that, but you were gonna possibly have them do some other work for you, so we left that at one-hundred-and-eighty thousand. The filter media was one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, and then Redwood Boulevard, there was a couple distribution projects that we've had at the bottom there, and we carry out yearly distribution projects, as you see on the bottom, of about four-hundred thousand dollars, now whether or not that should be, someone could argue that that should be increasing every year, because we know construction costs are gonna increase every year, but at this point, we've just identified four-hundred thousand dollars a year on that. Then in year 2021, we just identified about five million dollars for additional wells and transmission line. Now, that's something, that and the treatment plant are the two outliers that the committee did not suggest moving forward with at this point. So everything on the left-hand column is what they'd recommended going forward with. The five million and the twelve-and-a-half million for the water treatment plant, it was not recommended, but we put them in there for placeholders, so you could see what that would do to your rates if you did them in 2021 and 2022, for example. And so, what we've shown on there is basically those different distributions of costs, so we can take the twelve-and-a-half million and the five million off there, and we can show you where you're gonna be at with your rates. And if you want us, the water towers, you gotta tell us if you want a thirty-year note or a twenty-year note. If you want well number eight, that's the one-point-two, and well number nine, if you want to roll those two, Brian, would you suggest rolling those into a single loan? If you were gonna build them both at the same time, but.
Eight and nine?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, two million dollar loan, or a little over two million dollar loan for those. And so if we did those in 2019, what we're proposing is the wells on a shorter term, I would suggest on wells, you go no more than ten years, simply because there's rehab within ten-year period, I guess.
I was just kind of thinking, you're gonna start wearing stuff out, and it's.
If you could do it in five, if we could do it in five, I'd suggest doing them in five, because Raleigh's.
It's like buying your house on a thirty-year note, and you're replacing your refrigerator four times.
Thirty on the water tower.
Okay, ten on the, ten on the wells, thirty on the water towers, and.
Forty on the treatment.
Okay, and we'll do that, twenty on the treatment plant, you got that, Ryan? So, he's plugging that in, basically, it just depends on what type of loan it is, he just has a different number that he can enter there, so you can see, and if for some reason you don't want to do the water towers in 2019, we're on schedule to do that, and you wanted to push that out, this is easy to do that, to see how that impacts your rates. Or the treatment plant, for example.
Let's just keep this as the base, rather than moving things around at the moment.
Yep, okay. You want to show, talk through it, Ryan, a little bit?
Just the two percent annual.
So, so what I'll, I'll just kind of talk through real quick, the red line, if you remember, is our, what we wanted to have in our reserve fund. So, there's a lot of, there's been some discussion in the past, that that reserve fund doesn't necessarily need to be full years' worth of reserves, if you will, so that's the red line. The green line is where we're at with our, the closing. Um, so that's the red line. The green line is where we're at with our uh, the closing fund balance at the end of each year. So as you can see, the green line is that tails off. If we did nothing with our rates right now and did the improvements that we were proposing, that's what our, that's what would happen to our sewer fund. Or our water fund. If we did nothing with our rates, right there. So then, uh, if we'll go to the next slide, Ryan, to actually to make the rate adjustments, you can see up there, we have a two percent per year. So we're, we're making the assumption that you were only making a two percent rate increase per year with this scenario. Now, if in twenty nineteen, you did a a larger increase of fifty percent, that's what happens. Or if you go to a twenty percent, Ryan, why don't you try a twenty, twenty, twenty? So we're starting to get up there, as you can see.
Well, that's, that's it. I didn't, I didn't necessarily want to get into the the nitpicky fine details of looking at rates and proposals tonight. I just wanted to get the prior, the projects prioritized.
Yeah.
And then go upon kind of some of these policy issues that we talked about as far as terms go. And then we can manipulate numbers. Otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna be running scenarios for hours. The other thing that we need to talk about that really has an impact is our reserves.
Yeah.
Historically, we've, we've attempted to have about a year's worth of reserves in both sewer and water, which is
It gets, it gets to be a lot of money. If you can look at twenty twenty three, you've got over three million dollars in your reserve. That is, that's what our expenses are in a year, at that year.
It does include debt service or or capital projects, just O and M. It's about a two million.
Not even.
Million and a half, two million. You know, Sioux Falls, I think, runs on about a three month reserve, twenty five percent, which I think is that's, that's a little skinny. You know, and it, somewhere between a three and a six month reserve, I think would be, would be adequate. So in essence, what you do is you take half of our current reserves and do projects with them. So for instance, uh, we've got at least a million dollars in there that we could spend on well number eight. And that's at no impact to rates.
And that's one of the things that, you know, as we look at using that money and not, not necessarily bringing down our our reserves, but as we look into the future, if we can slowly bring that down, it definitely impacts the rates considerably. You know, if you took half a million and you injected a uh, basically where you have your projects, you put a negative half a million in there and and you got a freebie this year, and then you do another one and another one, you're going to get your debt service brought down. But you know, at the same point, you're getting projects done, so it could offset it.
But if, you know, when I, when I look at those dollars, I don't think they're that bad. I mean, if, if we didn't keep, you know, if we kept the increasing the rates, but we use the reserve, I mean, we could get out ahead of things maybe a bit.
Absolutely.
Which would be kind of refreshing, right, Raleigh? We're always pedaling from the back. So if we could get a reasonable increase to our citizens, but get ahead of things, I think that would be beneficial.
Exactly. And I think, you know, one thing I want to clarify, this spreadsheet does take into consideration our debt service on the red line. So I want to just clarify that. I know um, we can, we can take that out if we would need to. But at this point, what our red line shows is it includes our debt service in there. So not just our O and M costs, like what was stated, we, we have in this spreadsheet included the debt service. So whatever our annual costs are, whether it's O and M or debt service, we've included that in that red line right now.
Uh, the other thing, as far as reserves go, Sioux Falls has an interesting concept. They've got, like I said, three, three months of twenty five percent of their O and M costs. And then they also include in their reserves, capital reserves, I think ten to fifteen percent based upon the projects. And they explain this at a regional wastewater meeting, uh, ten to fifteen percent of their proj, estimated project costs for the next five years or ten years. And that's just in case bids come in high. So they don't just have an O and M.
Right.
Costs. So what we can do is, is I don't want to say buy down the rate increase, but we can extend the rate, extend the rate increase for a longer period of time and use our reserves to cushion that impact. So instead of three years of twenty percent, maybe we go five years of fifteen and still operate.
Right.
On a cash flow, positive cash flow.
Real quick, Barb, the five thousand gallon customer we do have on there, so you can see what that is. That's just the five, I know we didn't want to get into that.
And we typically use the five thousand gallon customer because that's what the state looks at when they, when they look at the rates. You know, there's always that question, well, what about grants? Unfortunately, grants.
Yeah, we won't qualify.
Unfortunately, uh, we're not going to qualify for much of any grants. Uh, we're, we're a fairly wealthy community. That's one of the criteria that the, that DNR looks at is, is your capacity to pay. They don't look at any reserves you've built up. But they look at your median household income and we're well above the average in South Dakota. Typically, those grants go to um, communities that are very poor and small and can't afford you know, this infrastructure. Because that, if they're building it. Yep. So we, we will certainly explore any and all opportunities for grants. But the days of the federal grants from the feds ended in the early nineties. Um, there's still the perception out there that there's all kinds of money from the feds. They're gone. They've been gone for thirty years now. And the state revolving loan fund, we might get some forgivable, but I doubt.
Probably not, yeah. We, we may, but I, I, I wouldn't count on it, but uh.
So what would we do? Let's say we actually did get a bit ahead. Would we just move up that, the um, street um, upgrades? Is that what we would, where would we go?
You know, our, our current plan, at least for the street upgrades, is, is once we get the, the Holly main project done in two thousand nineteen, it would be nice to start doing a street a year. For instance, we will do Main Street from, well, it would be Dogwood up to Holly and then a block west. Because we can't, we can't do everything.
That's not going to go for years.
It, it'll go for a long time. You know, that part of that reason is that when you do street projects, you want to start at the low end. You don't want to do like we did with Sylvan Circle and start in the middle. Kind of messes things up. You start on the low end. Um, it, for instance, here, we, we need to gain depth in our sewers. So we'll get that. And then we just start going east.
Yeah.
You know, we can't forget about Cardinal and and that area too. So that might be a year's project. Main and then a block west and then First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street. We're going to run into a little bit of an issue as, as we move east. We certainly know we've got some streets, Third, Fourth, Fifth, that are in very tough shape.
Yeah.
We may need to look at some interim patching projects. But as we move east, you're talking, you know, ten to fifteen years worth of projects, just to get the core done. At a million and a half to two million a year. But that's, that's kind of the plan.
Yeah. And I, you know, if, if there's any, if you did get ahead, like what Brian's saying is, you would probably chip away at more than just, you know, maybe it's more than one street in Main Street. If so, if you wanted to do more on the, I'll call it the yearly reconstruction allowance that we've got shown there, you would simply increase that to maybe two projects and maybe you do one in uh, Sylvan area and one over here. But those are things you can, you could work with, you know, you, instead of doing four hundred thousand on this program here, you would just increase that to something larger uh, to maybe do two projects instead of one a year.
And the other thing you have to remember is typically, well, we've been paying cash for the Sylvan projects. Uh, half out of the sewer fund, half out of the water fund. So we'll finance those as well. So instead of, you know, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars a year in cash going to those types of projects, we'll, we'll borrow that over a ten year term. So that million and a half will drop down to a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year in debt service instead of four hundred thousand a year in cash.
Right. And and just to clarify, on this spreadsheet, we've got the smaller distribution projects all on cash. We're paying for those with cash. We're not borrowing that money. So, yeah, the, the four hundred thousand a year, even the Redwood Phase One, the five hundred and forty one thousand that we show on that spreadsheet and the three hundred and thirty three thousand for Holly, those two are, we're paying cash out of the fund.
I just have a quick question, back on the, bless you, back on the rates with the five thousand usage uh, from the state average. Have we figured out what the Brandon average user is? Because I know I've either seen or heard that our average citizen uses quite a bit more than neighboring communities. So just trying to think ahead with the tiering idea.
We can, we can take a look and and we'll probably, if, we'll look at an average residential user. Because industrial, commercial, industrial customers, they're all over the board.
We can show you on this spreadsheet where they're at, where your users are. So the one to, two to three thousand gallon customer, three to four thousand gallon customer, the blue spots, the blue areas are the heavier users. That's where they fall in the different months of the year. You see that? And so then over on the right, way right hand side, you see the percentage of total number of user, but then the percentage of total usage is where you really find um, your big users. So it's actually the, it looks like it's the three to four thousand gallon customers, the bigger ones.
Well, we gotta, we gotta figure out, or I would like to figure out a way so that, you know, if you've got a family of six, they're going to use fifteen thousand gallons a month. Regardless, because they, even if they don't water. And then you've got a two family user that uses a couple thousand gallons a month in the winter months, and then they water their yard heavily and they're using fourteen thousand gallons a month. So we need to be careful when we set these tiers that we don't punish. And we got to figure out a way, and we got to work with our, our software folks. How do we do it? We do winter averaging for sewer. Can we do summer averaging for water?
Bingo. So whatever your, your summer average is, you get, or your winter average is, you get a multiplier of fifty percent more, so one and a half times. That's your allotment. After that, anything over goes to a higher tier or whatever it is. So.
Because some of those customers are going to be, if we, if we arbitrarily say fifteen thousand gallons is a new tier, some of those customers are going to get sixteen thousand gallons every month because they've got a, a big family.
But that's not my problem. That's their choice.
They're not necessarily putting, the, the, the stress on the, on the system is the summer watering.
Right.
It's not the everyday users.
But still, I, you know, that, that still is a choice. I agree with you, but.
So we would, I would like to take a look at that. And I'm just not quite sure how we would figure that out yet.
So, Brian, you and I can, I'll get this spreadsheet googly stuff going. Um, and then what we can do is we can run some scenarios. And then we can talk about what we're going to do with the software side and see if they can set it up. Because if we can set it up where it's fifty percent more of your water rate is what you get in the summer months and then twenty percent more than that or whatever, we can talk through that offline. So I guess, kind of pull this back to the goal of the night is, what's the priorities um, on what we're trying to accomplish? So I want to talk about, I've been taking notes on the whiteboard. Luckily, no one erased them from the last time, so.
Because I forgot to.
Yes, that's good. Thank you for not erasing. Um, so priorities, the, the big priority is backup. Um, at this point, we're surviving with our water conservation that's helping a lot. But uh, the thing that keeps me up at night is if well six would fail or somebody flipped the breaker.
Right.
Or SOL, it's not good for us. Um, and we have well seven. And yes, there's a lot of negative publicity about well seven. And we have to blend water with it. We can't just run well seven by itself. Um, so what I did is I, I did a couple of things on the whiteboard there. So our current capacity, well, one and six makes about fifteen, fifty gallons a minute. And we've got well three, it's seven hundred gallons a minute. So for emergency use, the summer use if we need it. So if we take well six out of the mix and we would put well nine and well seven together, we could survive. We could survive. We could shut off well six. That's not putting us ahead.
Right.
But it's giving us the redundancy that will make me not, make it so I can sleep at night. So I think when I look at that, the priority for me changes from eight to nine. Because if we had nine, we could be using seven that we already paid for. But number one, we got to do IMR.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the maintenance thing. And, and we can get that spec'd out. We could probably even do that this year.
Yeah, if we could. And we've got an engineer now, maybe she can take a project on and she, you, she's going to need help, John, so.
So we, we can.
Get her, get her hands dirty in the, in the green sand.
I talked to John about having, maybe getting that one fired up.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that in front of council as soon as possible to get that approved and start scheduling it and let Raleigh run the show on when he wants it done. But I mean, that should be done for sure by spring, for sure.
Well, you also keep in mind, looking at even our auto reports, our water fund's doing good on an annual basis.
Yes.
Our operating income that we um, brought in in twenty sixteen was over nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
In twenty seventeen, it's uh, six hundred and seventy thousand on operating income. So I don't want in, reason why, and then we had some projects in there that we have the projects that we did um, that we paid cash for. And then so the reserve did go down because we paid cash for those items. We're at two and a half million in our reserves right now in the water fund. So I don't want to, we just got to keep it all in, in check. So we're not increasing too much that our reserves keep on going up because we are doing okay on an annual basis on the water.
Well, and policy wise, I think that, sorry, policy wise, that's, that's another thing to talk about is, is should the sewer and and water fund be paying the cash for the street projects? Um, I don't think they should be taking the full burden.
We, we can't, we can't do that anymore. We could do it up in Sylvan Circle. Those were every other year and, and we could do that. But as we start moving into the Rushmore area, in the core part of town, we, there's no way that we can pay cash for those projects anymore.
So, well, eight, I'm, I, Raleigh, I know you, you want well eight. And I, I agree, we need to have that well eight. But the priority to me is we've already spent a million and a half on well seven. And the quality between eight and seven, you're still high on eight for gross alpha. You're at twenty points. And you're still going to have to treat that like well seven. Um, you know, we, we haven't done all the pump testing yet, but the data that we do have on well eight um, puts it somewhere between six and seven for quality. So, you know, we, I'd like to see well eight be way better quality, but when we get into the full blown pump testing, what is it going to be? And from the preliminary information that we have, the gross alpha was north of twenty and the combined radium was under five. It was very similar to what we saw in six. But we haven't pumped it hard. And that's when we started to see stuff with it. Um, and you know, what is, what does that picture look like? Can, if we did well nine right away and we could use nine and seven blended, could we get by until we know what the recommendations are from MCWC? Could we save that million bucks on well eight? That's the question I have. Not that I want to push it off, but and, and the, the water committee recommended it. So I mean, that's, that's.
I would just, I would just add to that, well eight, keep in mind, well, well six is um, I, I don't want to say, it's, it doesn't meet our standards today. I mean, there's a lot of things that it doesn't meet our standards with. Um, it has to do with, first of all, our, the pipes are corroded. Um, so we're on kind of on borrowed time on that. Um, we're pumping that on a regular basis. That pumps sometimes twenty four, seven. Um, and so I don't disagree with well nine. I think that's great that you want to move forward. But I don't think you should hold off on eight either. And it's simply because well eight really simply replaces well six. Well, six is um, I mean, our pump house is different today than it was before. There's a lot to it. There's more than just what appears to be meeting the eye on that. So I would suggest you stay the course with eight.
I, I, I would concur with that. Because we're gonna, even if we develop all these wells, we're not going to have too much water at some point. So I think we're going to need them all. And the flack we've taken on seven, we're going to have to do some, some major work on that before we can put seven online. So I would hate to be held up because of seven and not do eight and nine.
Yeah. But that's, that's up to you. How, you know, that was tonight, was meant to prioritize these projects and. Yeah, but that's, that's up to you, I'll, you know, that was tonight, was meant to prioritize these projects, and.
At least get them out to you, to think about them, um.
And the next meeting is in a week from now, I mean, I don't know how much longer you want to go tonight.
Two weeks.
It's in two weeks, okay.
We, we said maybe an hour, a little over an hour, so we're, we're past our timeline, which usually happens in water meetings.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we've got some time here, the next one, we're gonna look at sewer, the sewer projects that we've got coming down the pipe, so to speak. That was a bad one, didn't even think about it before I said it. And then that third meeting, so about every two weeks, the, the Thursdays that we don't have briefings or P and Z, was gonna be the schedule for the utility stuff. And then next Monday, we'll have a workshop or a work session on budget. So this was just to throw them out there, here's what we've got on the list, um, think about them, and then at the end, we'll prioritize and, and see the rate impacts.
So we have three left, I don't know if we're allowed to, like, make recommendations or, or anything like that. But I guess I'd like to see the IMAR as soon as possible, well nine as soon as possible. Um, so that we can be, have, I, I'd like to have that information, so that if it's letting bids or giving approval to an engineering firm to do the work, or whatever it is. I mean, the next council meeting, that's, I want to approve, push, go.
About getting proposals for the IMAR and the, the well eight, well nine projects.
Yep, yes, that's what the committee says.
Yeah.
Just basically.
Basically what the water committee recommended, you know, was, was IMAR, well nine, well eight. And so, well eight, design's already done, um, so it's just letting that for bid. Um, so I mean, those are the things that, you know, we're just blast forward and, and get it in front of the council. And, you know, if we had bids back, um, or as soon as we can get bids back, I mean, to start moving stuff.
Well, well, well nine might take a little bit to come up, but not too bad.
That'll take us a little bit of time to put our bid package together, but.
Well eight is just a matter of changing some dates, I'm assuming.
Yeah, change some dates, and that's, we want, we'll review with you again and make sure it's what Raleigh and you want and stuff.
And IMAR one, you know, that should probably be done during the winter anyway, or, or lower water usage.
Yep, agreed.
So we can, we can get that out by the end of the year, it'd be nice to do it this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can.
Did you? Well, it'd be nice to do it this year.
Perfect, so we'll, we'll have it bid so that you can do it in, uh, right away in January, so.
And that will take a little, I mean, it, it seems like it's simple, but it will take a little time to do that. It might take, you know, four, hopefully it's not more than four to six weeks, but just to rotate those cells and, and replace the, the media in each of the different bays, if you will, so. Okay, any other questions?
I know John's saying that we can get 300 to 500 gallons a minute out of well nine, and we base well six and well one off of where we're getting out. That's assuming a pump runs at 100%, and that's not realistic. Most pumps do not run at 100% efficiency. The reason we have to keep redoing well six is because we're pushing it at its full capacity. And that's why we have to redo the piping, check valves, the pitless monitor every three to five years. So ideally, the well drillers will tell you, they would like to see that run at 60%.
That's.
And you should never run more than that. So even if that well seven can produce up to 1,200 gallons a minute, you're only looking at 600, realistically, is what you should be using.
Right.
And even then, like you said, you wanted to go with seven and nine, I disagree wholeheartedly, because you need well nine to blend more. And if well nine only produces, we'll say 500 gallons a minute, and you're running well seven at 1,200 gallons a minute, you might be making close to that number, but you're not blending it the way you're supposed to be blending it. You have to have more of well nine than you will of well seven. You see what I'm saying? If you have the diluted water, you, to make it diluted, you have to use more of that shallow aquifer than you would of well seven. So realistically, you'd have to run 1,200 gallons a minute out of nine and 700 gallons a minute out of.
To get under the.
To get under the, the EPA standards and get as low as possible, if you want to get it to near zero, yes.
Yeah.
Um, when we set, determine what acceptable levels are, um, you know, there's, with the IMAR filtration and the HMO system, it doesn't take a whole heck of a lot of water to get well seven into a very usable state.
Yeah.
And, and that's something that, you know, we've done, we can definitely do some blending calculations.
And we've done that, and, and Raleigh's, I mean, he's right, if you want to get that radium and the gross alpha way down there. But, uh, you can, if, if we wanted to, you know, work on a, and that's why we said we'd work a live pilot. You would throttle well seven down until you get it, so you, when we're testing our water, we just make sure we're always staying below that. So, um, that's why we need to do the live, we can calculate it all day long, we can calculate it right now, what it'll take, and we, we know exactly what that is today uh, for the blending capacity, but we won't start there. We will start at something less with well seven, well seven, we'll throttle it down to maybe four or 500 gallons a minute. And well, uh, one and well nine, we would pump at full capacity, so we have a higher concentration of the shallow water than the deep water. Just so that we make sure that we stay below, but then at, over time, we'll just keep increasing well seven until we know what our capacity is with the new filter media and the, the blending capacity. And, and I would add that, you know, Raleigh's exactly right, uh, our, our design recommendations are running your wells at 60%. That's not just the well drillers, that's everybody, uh, you don't want to be running any of those. So you take your max capacity in each one of those columns that, uh, Tim had showed you, and take 60% of that, and that's what you should calculate that you have for capacity. Not the full well capacity, 60% of that well capacity, so, so he's exactly right.
All right.
So, good?
Any, anything else for the good of the cause? Anybody else?
Good discussion, thank you.
Okay, we will adjourn and, motion? All in favor?
No, we do, because we're missing a council.
All in favor?
Blaine is still on the council until July 31st.
Oh.
So.
And I could have went to the water conservation.
Yeah, that's now at Lisa's end, okay, anyway, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.